Larry Church.
Here.
Trace Connor.
Here.
Dana Miller. Chris Anson.
Here.
Scott Rossman.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Jolene DeSette.
Here.
Jeff Nance.
Here.
Cory Crabtree.
Here.
We have a forum.
All right, consideration and action of consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Jolene DeSette.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, with no items removed from the consent agenda, and we probably don't have anybody for the that's signed in for the airport case. And with no appearances or petitions from the audience, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. All right, moving on to the Seminole Gas Authority. Can we have a roll call, please, Jay?
John Kramer.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Jolene DeSette.
Here.
Dana Miller. Scott Rossman.
Here.
Jeff Nance.
Here.
Trace Connor.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Cory Crabtree.
Here.
We have a forum.
All right, consideration and action of consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Jolene DeSette.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Here.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, with no items removed from the consent agenda, and no appearances or petitions from the audience, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Okay, moving on to the Seminole Utilities Authority. Can we have a roll call, please, Jay?
Chris Anson.
Here.
Trace Connor.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Jolene DeSette.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Scott Rossman.
Here.
Dana Miller.
Yeah.
Jeff Nance.
Here.
Cory Crabtree.
Here.
We have a forum.
All right, consideration and action of consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call please, Jay.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Jolene DeSette.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, with no items removed from the consent agenda, and no appearances or petitions from the audience, move on to presentations. Presentation of an update regarding progress on the constructing of the Family Entertainment Center.
It's looking good. We, this is the newest rendering. This is going to be very similar to the finished product. So all the colors are pretty much nailed down finely. The number of minutia decisions that must be made to get it this far is mind boggling, but we're there. And we're actually, show us the next slide, Sharon. So this is, as we're beginning to pour the slab, and now, as of today, the slab is complete, and it's cured enough that we have started putting the red iron in the air. So this would be the bowling part of the building. It's looking fantastic. I'm very pleased with the group that we've selected, the Miller Tippins Group. They've got an onsite construction manager that is very willing to communicate with us on what's happening and why, and they keep us updated very well. All the plumbing, the electric, the conduits underground are in, so this thing should happen very quickly. All of the building has been delivered, so the whole thing should be in the air. I don't know, you think another week, babe, that we'll have the entire red iron in the air? Somewhere in that? Yeah? So we're still on target for next summer sometime, so I think we're in good shape. We got a few more details that we'll address in the next item, but overall, we're extremely pleased. The concrete looks fantastic. It's going well, and obviously, the dry weather didn't hurt things to get us this far, so although many of us want some rain, in this particular case, it has helped us, so. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have. The interior substantially is staying the same as you've seen before, and we did get to see a fly through. I don't think we got it loaded in time to have it tonight, but there is a really neat fly through video that we'll have for you in the next city council meeting, is my hope.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Looks good. All right, we'll move on to approvals and acceptances. Under bids, item one, consideration and possible action to accept a bid of $204,855 from Matthews Trenching, as presented by Miller Tippins Construction, for materials and installation of water lines, sewer lines, and manholes for the Family Entertainment Center. Deliberate?
Okay. Yes, sir. So there has been a little bit of confusion, as the mayor brought to my attention. So in the last month meeting, we approved, you guys approved, up to 250,000, not to exceed 250,000, for the extension of the orange line on your screen. So that orange line is what we approved last month. The actual bid on that, I believe, 150 even, 150,000 even. And so even though we approved, you approved, 204,000 not to exceed, the actual price is 150. So the yellow line is the 204,885 that we're asking for approval tonight, and that gets everything extended just beyond the Family Entertainment Center. The reason that this is important is, one of the things that we pride ourselves on is not passing a problem on to the next generation. And so in a technical way, we could go under the parking lot and save a little bit of money and go straight to the orange, the end of the orange line, but that's all under the parking lot, and that's a recipe for problems for somebody down the road. And so we would rather get it fixed and do it right the first time. So we're asking for approval to go ahead and extend that to the point where we can get it tied into the utility room that is there. Sharon, do you know where the utility room is on the building? So the extreme southwest corner of the building, so that'll allow us to do all of that, and the big piece of this is that it is going to gravity flow. So the depth, if you look at the star, where the star is, that is roughly, what do you think, 25, 30 feet? It's 30 feet deep, so even though it, there is a hill that kind of crest right there, and then this, well, the fitness center sits on the other side of that hill, it's, the actual bottom that we're trying to drain to is so deep that we're going to be able to gravity flow, and that adds a little bit of expense when we're going that deep, but I think we got a really good price on it. It's the same contractor that's doing all the work on the building, so we're, I think we're in great shape. We just need permission to go ahead and engage the contractor to finish that yellow piece of the line.
You said the fitness center?
Did I say fitness?
Yeah.
Family Entertainment Center. Family Entertainment Center. When you bowl as much as I do, it's a fitness activity.
When you fit as much as I do, I'm not excited.
Move to approve.
Second. Roll call please, Jay.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Jolene DeSette.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, with no other agenda items, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. All right, moving on to the Seminole Municipal Authority. Can we have a roll call, please, Jay?
Dana Miller.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Jolene DeSette.
Here.
Jeff Nance.
Here.
Scott Rossman.
Here.
Trace Connor.
Here.
Cory Crabtree.
Here.
We have a forum.
All right, consideration and action of consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call please, Jay.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Jolene DeSette.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, with no items removed from the consent agenda, and we have no appearances or petitions from the audience, we'll move on to current business. By the way, Steve, I'm going to recess this one in.
Perfect.
In those two executive sessions together.
Absolutely.
You okay with that? Okay. Current business under item one, consideration and possible action to approve wall engineering invoice number 22 and draw funds in the amount of $22,986.85 for work completed at the Seminole Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Did you get that, Jay?
One of them?
Yes.
All right.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Jolene DeSette.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, I see the motion to recess this meeting, if somebody will.
Motion to recess.
All right, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Thank you, guys. Okay, moving on to the Seminole City Council. Can we have a roll call, please, Jay?
Trace Connor.
Here.
Dana Miller.
Here.
Larry Church.
Sure.
Scott Rossman.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Jolene DeSette.
Here.
Jeff Nance.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Cory Crabtree.
Here.
We have a forum.
All right, people will stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Keep your hand with me, please. Father, thank you for this day, thank you for this time to be together, thank you for this wonderful group of people that you brought together for this time. As you help us, God, to make the wisest decisions for our city, that will lead us and guide us and direct us, bring us all together for the benefit of our city, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you.
All right, consideration and action of consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Jolene DeSette.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, with no items removed from the consent agenda, we'll move on to appearances or petitions from the audience. Mr. Jay, you're up. I'm just going to start writing your name in. First of all, I want to say a big thank you to the council for making the changes to code enforcement. I am super excited about the changes and have high hopes for now being under the police department. I also want to thank you for cleaning up the park. Two weeks ago, I went through and a large concrete picnic table was full of a group of people having a picnic. This week, I went through and there were hard parked people sitting on the overalls. It actually warmed my heart to see people utilize the park. I also want to say thank you for having the digits dug out. I believe, but not sure, that it was Seminole Auto Sales, but whoever it was, thank you. The waterways in front of Dollar General are starting to look nice and functional again. I met with Steve a couple of weeks ago, and he let me know that the week prior, 41 citations had been written for tall leads of abandoned vehicles and unsafe structures. I have been following up since, but no other tickets have been issued. However, I understand why with the changes that occurred to code enforcement. I only hope the police can continue with that level of citations. I truly don't think it will take long for people to realize the city isn't messing around and are unfortunate now. If we continue to do this and actually enforce the fines and all the warrants, I promise the world we get around this city quickly. I did do a record request for the citations, and I was a little surprised that three of the council members and one was to a city official's secretary. But in reality, it proves my point that no one really cares, and maybe now this will change into minds of some people in the outcome of our city. Another court date for those 41 citations is October 29th. I have made a spreadsheet to map my route to go past those properties on the 28th, and then I have taken off work to 29th, so I can go sit in the courtroom to see how many are dismissed, how many pay, and how many receive warrants for each appear. While I was meeting with Steve, we got in this truck and went down to Nagmoody Creek exit on the south side of town. This is one that I've been complaining about, this clog where water cannot flow through if we hadn't had the rains. He said he didn't realize that it was like that, and we had turned over that easement to the property owner, which he thought was Arnie Wallace. While I don't understand or agree that we would have given easements of major flood control areas to homeowners, I do hope that we can have code enforcement now under the police department enforce the cleanup of such areas. These are things that must be done to reduce, not stop, flooding issues. The other issue that I have been having is with the current budget that was just passed. There are several issues that I talked with Steve about, and he told me to write them down, and then he would get answers for me. I just haven't had the time to finish it yet, I've over half started, and I thank him for agreeing to work with me on that. I did send a record request for two items, the first being the budget modification showing the new change in code enforcement being moved to the police department, and showing the $200,000 the council approved for tall leads and structures. The current budget does not show that on the code enforcement budget. I was told that it was moved to capital improvements, which makes no sense, unless we're putting that there so it can be used for other things as well. It shouldn't be on the code enforcement budget as the city council approved. The second one I requested was a copy of the budget modification from the last council meeting, one that we just talked about, to request the actual additional up to $250,000 for the entertainment center. It had to be done immediately before the construction starts. While I understand the urgency of this, it should have been handled through the modification. One of the council members asked, where is the money coming from? And the answer was, I don't know, and the council approved it anyway. That is just amazing to me, and certainly not way to operate a budget. There absolutely has to be a modification, I'm unsure where that money will come from and what will be cut. If this isn't then, it's no wonder that we run and buy and get nothing back. Without an actual clean budget to follow, nothing can give back. I would still like to request a modification, or request a copy of that modification and see what's being cut. I will resend the request to Jay. In closing, I just want to say thank you all again. Progresses we made, it's very refreshing. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to bids and surplus. Under item one, consideration and possible action to surplus an inoperable 2014 Chevy Tahoe, VIN number 1GNSK2E03ER180821 at the police department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Jolene DeSette.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, under bids and purchasing, item two, consideration and possible action to accept a low bid of $7,875 from Cougar King Epoxy. So epoxy, apply epoxy coating to the front lobby flooring of the animal shelter, a budgeted CIP item.
Mayor, I'm going to ask that we table this for a month. I think we're going to do the back rather than the lobby, and we put it on the agenda as the lobby, so I think we're going to. Yeah, we're going to, we're going to handle where the animals are kept first, and that'll, that'll be on your next month's agenda.
Okay, all right, so we're going to table that item. All right, we don't need a vote on that, right?
Need a motion.
No, no need to motion.
Motion.
Okay.
Second. Second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Okay, moving on to item three, consideration and possible action to accept the state bid price of $49,420 from John Vance County Ford for a 2025 F-150 crew cap truck for the police department, a budgeted CIP item.
Is this something that only particular apart of Ford places can do, like why is Seminole not capable of this, of us purchasing a vehicle?
Great question. We sent it to them. This is coming off the state bid, so typically, like John Vance sends that and says, we'll meet this price for the entire state. So most communities will buy off of that, and we do give a preference to our local dealer with a small, I can't remember, I think it's 5% advantage if they're within 5% of meeting the price, but typically, they're not.
They can't come close on someone.
They're not interested. Well, they only get so many vehicles, and if they can sell them at a better price, they don't want us to have them at cost, essentially.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Jolene DeSette.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, item four, consideration and possible action to accept the low bid of $14,274.32 from Mission Critical Uplift to equip the new Ford truck at the police department, a budgeted CIP item.
Uh, motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Jolene DeSette.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, item five, consideration and possible action to accept the low quote of $8120, $8,121 from Redline Fire Equipment and Supply for a CM bed and bumper for the fire department to be funded by a grant from Oklahoma Forest Services.
So I was reading this in our email, and it had on the request, and it may have just been a misprint, but it actually said, subject was fire alarm, it should be fire bed, right? Which leads me to another question about the fire alarm that was on CIP, but that might have to be talked about later?
Yeah. Yeah.
One of my friends.
Second.
All right, roll call please, Jay.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Jolene DeSette.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, under resolutions, item six, consideration and possible action to approve resolution number 2025-10, a resolution setting the filing period and election dates for municipal office elections in 2026.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Jolene DeSette.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, moving on to item seven, consideration and possible action to approve resolution number 2025-11, a resolution concerning bridge inspection, responsibility by local government for compliance with national bridge inspection standards.
So I saw that this was going to be a matter that, we're going to leave this in the hands of, I guess, the experts for the bridge inspection, is that how I'm reading it?
My politically correct answer is yes, of course they're experts. My politically correct answer is yes, of course, they're experts.
Right, right. Do we decide which bridges or do they decide?
They they run their own tests and decide what has to be done.
Okay. Do we have any that we are concerned of in the city that that we want to target? Or do we have any that buses can't go down or something like?
So the bridge on South Harvey, south of the old Willis Quick Stop, that's that is a concern. I don't know if you've got.
There's five of them in town, thanks, but we do this every two years. It's a contract through the city in O'Donnell. We just accept the contract where we asked to accept the contract and use the same engineer that the county commissioners use that way. While they're here, they knock everybody out. So we have five bridges in town and they do all five.
Okay.
But which ones? But which ones are you concerned about?
The only one they were concerned about right now is the one at Maiden Wilson. That's in the process of getting changed out. Probably within the next eight months that needs changed.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Chris Anderson.
Yes.
Jolene DeSette.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, moving on to item eight, consideration and possible action to approve ordinance number 1309, an ordinance rezoning certain property from R2 to family dwellings to C1 neighborhood commercial.
So on the screen, you'll see the the yellow area there on Strather. To give you orientation there on the the top, I guess it'd be the middle left is the administration building for the Seminole Public Schools. That area through there has always been used as a commercial area. And this, I would consider this just a cleanup, to get those zoned properly. And the planning commission did agree with this. So we're asking that you give us permission to go ahead and put it into the proper zoning.
And it's only that south side that needs to be, that somehow is out of the zone?
Yes, it's only in the yellow box that we're dealing with right now.
Is there, I think there's not any residential there at all anyway.
No. Now, north, on the north side, we probably could could do some, but there is residential and we we've elected not to try to go.
The north side's already changed.
The north side's already what, Sharon?
It's already compliant.
Oh. Yeah, I don't, it's one of those houses.
I don't think there's any houses.
I don't think there's any left.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Roll call please, Jay.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Chris Anderson.
Yes.
Jolene DeSette.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, item nine, consideration and possible action to approve ordinance number 1310-1310, an ordinance rezoning certain property from A1 agricultural to C3 commercial.
So on your screen, you'll see the the requested area is in the red and a small hatched area behind that in the, I don't know what color, maybe green. So the airport is at the top of your screen there. And so we're asking that Van Eaton Concrete be allowed to rezone. Their plan is to come back on the green area and create a batch plant for their concrete and be able to give us a service here in Seminole. So we, the staff is in favor of it. The planning commission had no objections. So we're pretty excited to get a new company.
How many jobs did you say that?
I'm sorry?
How many jobs did we say that?
Twenty, roughly twenty.
Move to approve.
Second.
Hang on just a second. Why does that have two different?
One's a heavy industrial and then the other's just a commercial.
Can we do those on one vote or should we do them separately? Kind of. Oh, they're only asking for the one.
They're asking for the red.
Oh, okay. We're just asking for the.
Oh, just the red now?
Yeah, they just want the red because the others are already.
Well, the ordinance says.
It says A1 to I.
To I3.
Just A1 to C3. There's two on that slide.
I think the ordinance is fine if you want to vote on the ordinance as is and it should take care of both of them.
Okay, all right.
Unless there's no objection, unless you want it, you can vote on it separately, but the ordinance is going to have to be passed and it's.
I know they're picky about ordinances. We've run into that in the past, but. No, I'm good with it. He's good, bud. He's the attorney.
He'll be defending us.
Did we have a motion yet?
I thought we had a motion.
We have a motion, I have a second.
Okay, go ahead.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Chris Anderson.
Yes.
Jolene DeSette.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, moving on to current business, item 10, consideration and possible action to approve accepting grant number OHSO-FFY 2026 to Seminole CI 00162 from the Oklahoma Highway Safety Office in the amount of seventeen thousand four hundred twenty dollars to fund officers overtime for traffic enforcement, in-state travel for training courses, and safety summits.
Motion to approve.
Is this a one-time grant, Steve?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, we've had it before, but it, yes.
It's annual.
I think I, I think I'm answering your question.
You are.
It's not repetitive that we're going to get each and every year.
Thank you.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Chris Anderson.
Yes.
Jolene DeSette.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, item 11, consideration and discussion with possible action to purchase solar-powered pole-mounted Christmas decorations for North Phillips Avenue from a sole-source vendor, Easy Treasy, at a cost of ten thousand sixty-eight dollars for three five-foot and three seven-foot decorations with timers and remotes. Sean, never mind.
We got Sean as our resident solar Christmas festival expert.
For the timing.
Yes, so we did some more research on it, trying to get some answers for questions that you had on the last go-round. And priced six in total, three of the snowmen, five foot tall, and three of these seven-foot tall, the three soldiers. Along with these solar panels, we've got six of those. And the shipping, they're actually able to give us, give us an estimate of seven fifty dollars from ship freight to us. And it's, it'll take a little under two weeks to get to us. And they have them in stock, so maybe they'll come this way very quick. We, me and Cory actually sat down and had a meeting with them over video conference. And I think the next, oh, this is just a, we want to look now a little bit more detail. The next one will be the soldier. This is the info on the kits themselves, output, warranty, and all that good stuff. Can't remember if we had that on the last one. And there's a layout for the map with the updated pricing. They're up there as the alternating towards soldier, snowman. And I told them for that. Next one, we have a picture of that one up there. So that's a picture of what they had lit up while we were in the meeting. I mean, they're pretty bright. They seem like a good quality product. The way they mount is pretty intuitive. Once you get the bracketing up there on the pole, it's basically just hanging, drop it, you know? So they're pretty easy to get on. Anybody goes wrong with them, they have the parts in stock, they'll be getting to us. Or if they're too bad, they can, we can send them back when they're in there. But, yep, that's kind of what we have on them.
Can you share with them what those are made of?
They're made of, there's aluminum frame with the LED lights and the plastic, I forget what you call it.
PVC.
Yeah, PVC type filling on the inside. I think they're good for up to, what, sixty mile an hour wind. But that's.
And they did also say that those lights are, what are they, dipped in epoxy?
Yeah.
So that they don't.
Yeah, they're dipped in epoxy. They got fifty thousand hour burn in time, I think is what they quoted that. So with a bin like that and that epoxy, it resists UV fading and that way discoloration will be, which was a little pretty rough. And they, they had, had good luck with the solar panels on. They've had good luck with the batteries themselves.
What's the two thousand dollar difference?
The first go-round, we had a price for each and each one. Though I think they have four variations, we were just pricing one and then we repeated a couple of the two ones. Last meeting, I think nobody really liked the yellow ones. It was just the four soldiers and the snowmen. So that's what we priced on this one.
We also had him pull one of those and turn it on during that video conference.
Yeah, yeah.
They're very yellow. So if you don't like the yellow gold type look off of a light, they were very, they were not bright. They were pretty, looked like an old Edison bulb is what I call them.
These one?
Yellow. The other ones that they had.
Yeah, it looked like a kind of shooting star.
Christmas February.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. It was, they were not impressive. As you guys weren't impressed, they weren't impressive inside either. Why so much for shipping? Seven hundred, where's it coming from?
It comes from Florida. And that's, that's if they're shipping one or if they're shipping all six of them. It's, it's a flat frame and.
My guess, my guess is they probably have to build crates for those so they don't.
Yeah, they have to have a place on the.
I just know, they better be impressive because I've already gotten a bunch of, why are we spending ten thousand dollars on those lights? You know, and I, I think they're cool, but you know, I'm not. Well, that was my worry because I didn't want the solar to not be impressive. That's what I always worry about. And that's why I asked OGD why we can use the power because I'm always, I just think that power lights are so much brighter than.
Will these be replacing ones that we already had or is this new spots that we want to put new?
Yeah, this is for North Phillips, North of Reed. We had six light poles from North of Reed to Reed. As far as I know, we've never had any out there.
So it would be new. It wouldn't be replacement.
We have had some small ones and even downtown, but I don't, Stephen better tell you that.
Yeah, we had Snowflakes at one point that were sponsored and they've aged out. And also, we're not allowed to tap the power anymore. So that's the problem.
I like, yeah, the idea of the Christmas lights. I just don't like the idea of being on the Phillips. I'd like to try to beautify downtown. That's where I would put it. I'm kind of like Nance. It was kind of fifty-fifty on people. It's a lot of money. I think, it just seems crazy right now with the time of the federal government shutdown and then we're spending ten thousand dollars on Christmas lights. And we may not have funding for some of our bills, but if there's to be Christmas lights, I would say, I would like to see it downtown. On the Phillips, something to just dress that downtown.
Cory, I'm going to speak for you. You're the one that brought it up. Your idea, I think, was, if I remember correctly, was to kind of guide people to the wellness center and we kind of brought the people in the tent in the town.
That's part of it. It would help. But we've got the snowmen, the businesses put out at the point. So you may get to.
I'm not trying to speak for you, but I was trying to, just to explain. It's like a starting point, right? And I get it.
I agree with Jolene. I would love to put up in downtown too. What Stephen and I have become is that we cannot use power and there's no power in those poles.
These are solar.
Yeah, but the, so part of the downtown ones are those branded poles that are black and that are covered, that are really nice. So if you had a problem with these sliding for some reason and we put them on those, you're obviously going to do damage to the poles. That would be my one concern, but Jay Brannum, I don't know if you guys saw the Facebook post, had a really great idea. Maybe you could reconfigure the old ones that we have with LED lights. And if the solar worked, maybe you could do those. So I don't know, but. We still didn't have the old? Apparently we have them. I didn't know that.
What's that?
Do we have the old ones?
I don't think, if they are, they're ancient and they're probably.
So I don't know that you can use them, but that was just an idea that he had as well, so.
They've got to be twenty years old.
At least. Yeah, I don't even know.
I'm not against it. I was just, I was just wanting to know how you, I just wanted you to share what you shared.
I would love to have both, but I know that to put one on every pole downtown would be, even every other pole, there's a lot of poles downtown now. I don't know how many poles we put down there, but.
And this money, these funds come from beautification?
We can, or if we want to do a modification somewhere else, we can do either one, but yeah.
Why can't we tap the electricity anymore? I'm just curious.
I'm going to leave that to Cory to say, we we got on a conference call and the answer was basically, no, we don't allow that anymore unless you meter it.
Okay. Can you put that, Dan, make a note of that for the next time we renew their franchise agreement?
So.
Cory, you mean the five hundred and six million?
So basically, what we've been told is, is that there's a certain amount of energy that goes to those poles. And if it's altered at all, then they assume there's a problem or can be a problem. I think it's crazy, but you got to follow the rules. So, I mean, there's an outlet right there, literally, but. So they gave us the option of, or the option, Steve, that you can run underground, which is.
Run underground, meter our own.
Or you can run wire overhead and make, make all those. That would have been stupid.
I hope all their easements are clean too.
I'm sorry?
I hope all their easements are clean too. Hey, I've been, I've been going around, around with them about my bills, so. I'm, I'm all for, you know. I just remember when, when we did, when their franchise agreement came up.
Yep.
Last time, about ten years ago or so, they were just kissing our rear ends like you would not believe. And then once they got that thing renewed, they disappeared.
Every meeting.
Yep.
It's thirty years, isn't it?
So, is it thirty years or twenty? Anyway.
Is it thirty?
I think it's twenty-five, but.
That gummit.
Wow.
I may not be around here, but.
Somebody remember this.
Somebody, yeah, somebody remember.
Write it down, someone.
Apparently Norman remembered because they voted the franchise out.
So I would like to have a definite answer as to where the ten thousand dollars is coming from.
The ten thousand will be coming from the beautification fund unless you direct us to do something else.
So that's, was that, was that fund, the whole thing, was it ten thousand? Wasn't it all?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay.
And just, just as a reminder, I did talk with our council because they are the ones that use those a lot. Just to make sure that they were not depending on that to go straight to them because they have used the last couple of years quite a bit. They agreed that they had some projects that were smaller that they can do. And actually, I made them a part of this and just to make sure that they didn't have an issue with it. Now, we're taking a risk no matter what we do because we don't know how those are going to look on the pole. I mean, this is what it is. I mean.
Cory, I would argue that we spend more than this and we had about thirty seconds of discussion for fireworks that poof, were gone within seconds. And we're, this is the second time brought this back for lights for the same, the same purpose. I'm, I'm ready to make a motion. Like, I don't, I don't, I feel like we answered the questions. I think it's time to update those, that area. I'm with you, Jolene. I want the next round in downtown. And that, if it's not, it will get a no vote next time. Not threatening, just letting you know. That sounded like a threat, but it's not.
We can remember your presence.
Somebody write that down.
Well, I'll threaten to vote like she votes.
On, on that note, I think that it's going to take a team effort. Nice in the town. You roll through a downtown, you're like, oh, that's really neat. And those are small and they're, I think, really neat. Someone needs to say, hey, you need to research this and let me know or let Sean know or something. I mean, somebody can do some research on it. Not that he's our dedicated Christmas light person, but.
Now, are you like walking down the streets and they're covered and it kind of?
Oh, is it simple?
I think so.
Yeah, it's really gritty.
There's a lot there, yeah.
And it brings in a lot of tourism.
Is that lit up real good, actually?
It, it is. Now, they were in the darkroom.
No, I'm talking about the street lights.
Oh. Hot or?
They stay out, yeah.
Will they stick out or not?
I don't know that. That's what, that was my worry because of them being solar.
Yeah, I live here, but.
I know, none of us do.
Yeah, street lights are, street lights are pretty good. You can see people walking.
I really wish that someone could just order one and just take it up there and see, but.
Well.
If they don't work there, we'll move them downtown.
Yeah, I mean, they're movable. It's not like you're.
Yeah, if we order these and they look like they'll mount okay and won't tear up the lamp post and, you know, we can order more for next year.
That's a very ideal action. So you're making a motion?
Sure. I thought she already made the motion.
She did.
Oh, she already made a motion? Oh, second. So we've got a motion and a second? Is that what that was? All right. Trace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Chris Anderson.
Yes.
Jolene DeSette.
No.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
John Kramer.
So if they don't work, we can move them.
Yeah, they're, they're movable, yeah.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'm just making sure.
All right, moving on to item twelve, consideration and possible action to approve closing Keith Marshall Lane to the Boontown Playground dedication on Wednesday, October twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, from four to six, four to six P M.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Chris Anderson.
Yes.
Jolene DeSette.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, item thirteen, consideration and possible action to allow the placement of a memorial plaque on the center of the concession stand area at the softball court in memory of Maurice Spencer Bolo, who was a lifelong softball supporter.
Second.
Well, hold on. I put that on there. So many, Jennifer's going to write something out so we can put it on the plaque. She wanted to do that. I talked her about it. So that's what she wants to do.
And we're, we're paying for it, so.
Well, thank you for doing that.
Yeah, that's really nice.
He dedicated a lot of years to this.
He threw, hey, he threw them out when I first came when my daughter was six. So yes, yes. And we became friends and started umping together all over. So I mean.
It's our twenty-eighth year he started with.
Really? Wow. That's a big loss. Well, thank you for doing that.
Roll call.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Chris Anderson.
Yes.
Jolene DeSette.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, item fourteen, discussion, action, and presentation on code enforcement solutions. You're taking it, huh?
Yeah. Okay. Last month, we had, okay, last month, we had quite a discussion regarding code enforcement. And so we told you then we were going to bring solutions and I believe that we have. So just to give you a little background, we've got a department that has construction inspection duties and they also had code enforcement duties, which I would quantify. You can see on the screen there, the, the code and, or construction inspection duties. Essentially, they're going out to, to look at the construction elements, footing, framing, mechanical, occupancy inspections. And occasionally, they assist code enforcement when they do other things that might be necessary. So. Next slide, please. So what we've decided to do is we are going to move code enforcement to the police department. And the police department will now handle writing the tickets, okay? So if we've got unsightly structures and tall weeds and grass, those things will now come through the police department. So we are in the process of hiring somebody to do that. Just to, to give you a little bit of history on how, how we got here and why there's a little bit of controversy both sides, frankly. Some think we're way too strict. Some think we're way too strict on what we're doing, and there's a, a complete fifty percent of the population that think we're not doing enough, okay? So, just to give you an idea, I think it was in twenty nineteen that the city council decided that we weren't doing enough, and it wasn't happening fast enough, so. What we did is we, we got into a, a rut, that essentially, the offenders were able to mow their properties about three times a year. And we would warn them, we would wait, we would negotiate with them, finally give them a ticket, and then we'd have to go abate the property, and that's how they got in a position where they were only having to do it three times a year. And it was very frustrating with the, the property owners that were next to them. So, as a result, Brad and, and I kinda went through the Norman ordinance. We, we nicknamed it that, it's, we actually used a lot of their ordinance that sped the system up. And what we mean by that is, you only get one ticket, I mean, you get time, we're gonna give you time to comply, but once that happens in May, we don't give you a warning next time. You get a ticket, it's, what is it, what's the price?
Eight hundred and twenty dollars.
Three hundred and twenty dollars, and there's, I mean, it's expensive, so you, right now, I think, for the most part, our folks understand that we weren't, we're not joking, that this is gonna be expensive if you don't comply, so. And this speed has, has, I'm sure you're receiving the same phone calls I am, which is, all you had to do was call me, why are you sending me a ticket? Well, when you write the volume of tickets that we've got, and, and, listen, we understand, everybody feels like it's a personal attack. And one of the best things we ever did was we had a citywide abatement here, you remember that? I think we had a hundred and twenty people that were there for abatement for that. Well, we had all the, the who's who of Seminole wondering why we didn't just give them a call. Well, when we put them all in the city auditorium, they began to grasp, oh. Everybody in here wanted a phone call, and that's just too overwhelming to get to, especially multiple times a year. So, next slide, please. So, um, our solution is, we're going to end up at the police department with a civilian code enforcement officer that will be under the P D. Efforts will be made to contact property owners who don't meet the standards, however, all you had to do was call me, that's never gonna be something feasible, we're gonna do what we can to notify these owners, because at the end of the day, all we really want is to have it look nice. We want it, we want Seminole to sparkle, so that's what we're after, we're gonna try to get there. And the city council will consider hiring additional part-time code enforcement to, to give us especially a leg during the mowing times of year, and then additional budget requests will be considered for, for closing, for foreclosure proceedings, and I'll explain that as we go along. So, one of the big things that I think we need to do is look at establishing the Seminole Pride Program. Many of our old timers will remember the, the Green Pride Program back in the day, and so, we're, we've thought about this. Many of the things that, that Jay has issues with are just piles of stuff sitting on the curb, right? So, what we're talking about is establishing Seminole Pride under the Street Department. That offers curbside and junk pickup with, with debris and debris, but it's gotta be within parameters, okay? We know from experience that if we say we're picking your stuff up, somebody is gonna put a large oak tree with sixty-five inch.
Refrigerator.
Out there, refrigerator, I mean, you name it, they're gonna put it out there and say, well, I thought you said you're gonna pick it up. Well, we're gonna have to have pretty tight parameters, I mean, we're gonna do what we can to make it look great, but we are going, we're thinking about going to this, this is, this is the first time my city council is hearing this. We're not asking for action tonight, I did put it on there, if you wanna take action, but it's not expected. Certainly, it would surprise your staff if you say yes, let's go. So, um, these crews will be able to abate debris, tall weeds and grass, under court order to enter private property. So, what we're talking about doing is actually having staff, so rather than having to contract with someone like we are now, and they have to wait thirty-plus days for payment, which is a real strain on any private business, what we would be doing is we'll have our staff, and once we get permission to enter private property and clean it up, we're gonna go swarm it with riding lawnmowers, where possible, pushmowers, weed eaters, we're gonna take care of the problem as it exists. So, in order to be able to do this, this is the restore Seminole concept. We're talking about purchasing the, the dump truck, one riding mower, one push mower, two weed eaters, and uniforms might be light, because that's gonna be a monthly, or, yeah, monthly expense, but in any case, the expense moving forward for just the investment would be about a hundred and forty-three eight. Two personnel, I think we can get there with a hundred thousand dollars annually. And the maintenance and operations, this is a wild guess, I could be high on some and low on others, but I think we're probably looking at about eight thousand in gasoline, strings and blades, fifteen hundred. Protective gear, then, you know what that is, landfill fees, so, refresh my memory, five hundred dollars every dump?
Yes.
Five hundred dollars, so I'm thinking maybe three a month is what we would be dumping, and so, our landfill fees would be about eighteen thousand a year. And as I said, the uniforms are probably light, it's gonna cost more than a hundred dollars a year for that, but. Hundred and twenty-eight thousand just for the, for the M and O, and, uh, I think that gets us in a good spot. Additional warrant officer for specific to tall weeds and grass, so we've got, I, I meant to ask her, do you recall how many warrants we've got outstanding, I wanna say thirty-one hundred? Somewhere in that neighborhood, three thousand one hundred warrants outstanding, not all of those are tall weeds and grass. But what we're talking about is maybe adding a tall weeds and grass officer that, hey, if you're not paying that three hundred and twenty we build you, we're coming at it, and we're gonna file a lien. And Brad, you may chime in here, but what we're talking about is once we file a lien, that we're gonna go through the expense and go through foreclosure, if you're not gonna keep your property up, we're gonna foreclose on it, and we'll sell it back to get it on the tax rolls. That's a pretty expensive proposition, I think Brad believes we're, I'm high on twenty-three thousand, as you can see on my spreadsheet here, but I, I, I don't want any surprises as we go into this, if you decide to do it. Any auction expenses on the foreclosed properties, I'm guessing around fifteen thousand dollars a year, so. Overall, in order to do the entire project, and certainly, you can pick and choose pieces of this to implement, I wanted to give you the whole, the whole shock, you know, sticker shock and, and let you see what it would really take to make it sparkle. But you can take pieces of this, elements, and, and piece it together that you want, but right now, the total, if we did it all, it would be about three hundred and sixty-five thousand total, and then the reoccurring expenses would be somewhere around two hundred thousand dollars, reoccurring annually. Be glad to answer any questions or go back if you wanted to. One thing I would note, I, I kinda did this, uh, because I don't want the general public to think that, hey, there's three hundred and sixty-five thousand, they ought to be able to do this, well. What they don't see is all the work that you guys do behind the scenes in these work budget sessions that we, we struggle with, and you guys, you guys get in the mud and wrestle and, and really grapple with each other about what, what do we need the Seminole to look like, so. For three hundred, three hundred and sixty-five thousand, these are things, and these are just a few of the things that I took off our budget work sessions, uh, things that need to be done, that we probably wouldn't be able to if we spend the three hundred and sixty-five. The Struthers Street overlay, our nine, uh, our water and sewer line replacement crew need a track hoe. Scott wants a new fire engine, uh, I think our youngest one was two thousand and one? Two thou, well, that was, that's a huge one, right?
Oh, our oldest is.
Okay. Uh, police cars, splash pad, and expand the animal shelter, concrete, and, and I color coded these so that they're roughly the same amount, three water well overhauls and floodwater spot improvements. And then the, the last section would be the cemetery mower, lake tractor, snow plow replacement, and increase the sewer and water line replacement activities, so getting more of those high-year-old water and sewer lines out of the ground, get them replaced, so. Those are the things that our city council has to struggle with, I know I'm preaching to you, but you'd like to know that for the benefit of the public, to understand that this is all, I mean, what we're trying to wrestle with. Be glad to answer any questions?
So we are gonna hire another code enforcement?
Yes, sir, we're, we're advertising currently.
Here's my question on that, because I figured out what the problem was with the neighboring of my mom. Nobody went back to check that house. I was told people supposedly paid their ticket, but nobody went back, that house is still trash. So that, we're telling these guys, hey, pay your three hundred and twenty, but don't clean your house up. That's wrong, they need to clean the house up, anybody go pay a fine. But if not held accountable, so you're paying a fine, you're just paying a fine, gotta be held accountable. You gotta clean that place, it's still not clean, it's still trash. So, nobody's going back to check.
How do you make them clean it? I mean, that's.
I don't know the whole detail on it.
Did you see an answer in here somewhere? How, 'cause I didn't.
No, I didn't either.
Yes, backup. Uh, abatement.
Of the foreclosure?
Yes.
Okay.
So, what we'll do is we'll take, we will notify them to abate the property, we're gonna come do it. When they don't do it, we will come and we will do the work, that's, we call that abatement, I'm sorry for using the term, not everybody knows what that means, and I, I work it so often, we all kinda assume that everybody knows, but we'll, we'll come do the work for you if you're not going to do it. But, you either pay us, or you pay for the work, or we're gonna file a lien against your property. When you don't pay us back, then we will foreclose on that lien.
So Steve, is that if, in that situation, if they paid the fine, that they still didn't address the property? How do, how are we triggered to go and, go to the property and clean it up, even though the fine has been paid, and again, from this side of the ledger, it looks like it's been, we're settled up, but if you physically drive by there and see that it hasn't, that's what this new position will do, is say like, hey, this is still, we still have this.
So there's, there's two avenues for a situation like that, you've got the criminal court, which is your tickets, what, what Scott was talking about. It's three hundred and twenty dollars per ticket. Now, what a lot of people don't realize is that every day is a continuing offense. We could issue three hundred and sixty-five tickets a year for the same offense until you clean it up, but just as you said, they're not gonna clean it up. If, you know, now, not saying not, not always, they, sometimes they will, sometimes they won't, but you get their attention if they're living there, or, or you're, you know, forcing the issue, some people will pay their fines, but as you said, they may not. On the, on the administrative side, not the, not the municipal court side, but the administrative side, the city has the authority, every city has the authority, to declare that premises a public nuisance. And there's a procedure for, for going, going through that. Once that's declared a public nuisance, then the city can enter the property, clean it up, as Steve said, assess the costs to the property owner. We would, uh, secure that, those costs by filing a lien on the property. And then, within a year, uh, we, we have to foreclose on that lien. One thing I do wanna make a, a point is, the law just changed, we haven't adopted this particular portion into our, our code yet. I kinda think our code's a little bit better, I'll have to look at that a little bit further, but, um, under the, under the state law, you can't even file a lien against an occupants home, I mean, you can't foreclose on their homes, it's, it's a little bit tricky. So, just, but know that, under our current setup right now, under our code, we can enter that property, clean it up, assess the costs, file the lien, and within one year, we can foreclose on that lien. And the problem that you, I'm sorry to keep talking, but the problem is, is that a lot of these are vacant lots. So what happens when we foreclose on that lien? We foreclose on that, that lien, it goes up for auction. Nobody wants it, because it has no value, so the amount of our lien is where the bidding starts. So if it costs us a thousand dollars to go clean this lot up, mow it, haul the debris off, whatever, a thousand dollars for this lot, nobody's gonna own it but us, and now you're gonna own it. So when you own it, that means you're gonna have to assume the maintenance on it, so we, it's kind of a, you know, give and take, I, I tell Steve all the time, uh, be careful what you ask for, you just may get it. And, and now you're, you got a list of properties that you're gonna have to make, to maintain, and Sura won't, Sura doesn't want them.
Right.
Most of them.
How do, how does the, you said declare a public nuisance, how, who, how, what is, can you just cover really quickly how that process?
Yeah, so Sharon's, uh, our, I think you delegated that to Sharon a, a while back. Center of the Community Services, uh, your code enforcement officer puts together a notice of public nuisance, it's sent to the property owner, uh, there's a hearing set, that property owner is given notice to appear in front of the, the administrative body, which is chaired, you know, um, by Sharon or Community Development. That, at that time, that property owner can give basically a reason, defense. He or she can say, this is not a public nuisance, it's, if it gets to that point, I can tell you, I don't think I've seen any that are not. Standing water, tall weeds and grass, debris everywhere, whatever it is, a, a, a structure that's about to fall in a house, so they can come in if they choose and, and, and dispute that it's a public nuisance. So, once the, the hearing is held and that property is declared a public nuisance, then at that point, the owner is given an order to abate the nuisance. Okay, they can abate it, but it goes on the list. But once that order to abate is, is issued, the city at that point has the authority to go in, after a, a brief appellate time period, which that property owner, if they were overruled, they could come in front, I believe, the city council. But I've never seen that happen, but, um, at some point, after that appeal period, probably fifteen days, it would go to Steve, I always have Steve, when funding is available, at that point, I guess they're prioritized by the city staff, Steve would sign an order to proceed, and that's directing the demolition or cleanup of the property, and at that point, we go in and, and it's handled, and then the process for the lien and all that takes place after that. So you asked a question about how long, thirty days?
To get it declared a public nuisance.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So that, that kinda describes eighty percent of Board Two, eighty percent of Board One. Our school buildings go, um, buildings on Main Street, the old high school, the school's warehouse that they used to do, the bus barn, um, I mean, I, I just, I want us to really be fair on these things, because, um, like, oh, your mom is so sweet. However, um, they're neighbors, they're, they're just that sweet, you know what I mean? But they live differently than your mom does, um, you don't, you don't sit at their tail, it may be different for you, but, um, they're still good humans, um, they just live differently, and I would, I would like more to see someone knocking on doors or. And I would, I would like more to see someone knocking on doors, or at least, "Hey, let's try to get this before monies come up," because they live in some of these houses, because it's the only thing that they can afford, this is the only way that they've ever known to live also. So I, penalizing people because this is how, this is, this is the way that they live, um, hurts my feelings, because $320 is steep. I've cut a lot of yards for free here lately. I've had some incredible help cutting those yards, um, to get it done, and it's, I, I know exactly what you're talking about, whenever we say, um, some of these people just say, "I'm cleaning their stuff up in that street." Um, I just, I'm not, and I'm one, hey, I wanna be fair across the board kinda thing, but, um, some of these houses, that's all university and Osage and things like that, um, they're just running a little different life, but it don't mean that they're, that they should be penalized extra, um, for their little different life that they're living, but, um, I wanna see it get done, but I also wanna see just as much as to help them without cost to that person. Um, because pride comes in, ego comes in, um, they're afraid that if they answer the door, they're gonna get in trouble or a ticket, um, so it's, it's just, I wanna equally help as we are.
Steve, we talked before about Famous' building downtown, and we talked about there's nothing we can do about that other than clean it up, and really, but this would take care of that, where we would actually own that property after a year, correct? And it's not just a lien?
You're gonna end up owning that property, period, if we clean it up.
Ultimately, it comes-
But it's already, I mean, it's already a possibility.
How much money do we want to spend on abatements?
It's gonna fall down.
And you guys have been really, really gracious, I mean, $350,000 this year, uh, for abatement.
And there's bricks in the alleyway, it's gonna fall down, and it's gonna hurt. And I'm not even sure not, there's not people living in it. But I just, you know, the old majestic cafe down at the end, on that corner, I know the door was wide open the other day, and so, um, I, I was just curious about that, and I, and I get what Jolene's saying too, 'cause, you know, I deal with those folks a lot. And, uh, and, but it's very frustrating. Um, and I don't know how to find out, I mean, in our neighborhood where our church is at, I don't mind cleaning up the lots, but I don't know who owns them. I mean, Bonnie and Charles Grant have been dead for years, and I, they own that corner of Wilson and University, or they did, and I don't know who owns it, and I can't just go brush hogging without knowing. And then Wilson and Jefferson, Mr. Bundy's been dead for years, and I don't know who owns that. And, uh, business, I mean, weeds are four feet high. And, uh, but how do you, how do you go about doing that?
Just a-
Just go do it and ask for forgiveness?
I'll, I'll tell you this, so we, Sharon and Steve and, uh, James Moon, all of us, the hardest part of my job is an abatement of a property that's occupied. That's the hardest job I have as a city attorney, I promise you. The houses that are dilapidated and unoccupied, they're, those are the easy ones. It, it, you know, it's, you throw money at that, you can make that go away. But when you've got a str- Sharon and I, we've got one right now, and I absolutely agree with everything she's saying. You know, we've got a, we, you know, I'm not gonna get into specifics, but we've got one that is, I mean, Sharon and Steve are right, you, it, it's not worth fixing up, but a family wants to move in it. It's structurally unsound. And the city has a duty to inspect that building, that house, before a family goes in there. But they need that housing. And so I'm sitting here, I mean, I literally have a gut check every time this, this particular property comes up, because I'm so passionate about this family, but I also know what's right. It's the hardest, probably the hardest issue that I have faced in a, in a long time. And you think it might be simple, depending on what side you're sitting on, but I'm telling you, it's tough. And Jolene's right, I mean, we all know that those situations are out there, nobody wants to put anybody out on the, on the street, but that's just, it's just every town has them, and we've got our share of them. But there's so many, I think, uh, there was 122, back when Ed Lemmings was doing this, it was 122 that we put up on the listnet of houses that have already been abated. We've already got orders of abatement ready to go, to knock them down, and we've started doing that over a period of time. But for every five you knock down, there's 15 more ready to go. So it's just, it's just an issue, a saga, that, you know, I don't think there's any, any answer to. It's just, you just have to approach it from all directions. And the same with code enforcement, you know, this council's made it very clear for decades, everybody, every council, this comes up every, I mean, it just seems like every other year it comes up. All we want is compliance. Okay? We don't want your money, we don't want your fines, take your fine and use it to, if you can't afford a lawnmower, or you can't afford, take the fine, we don't wanna fine you for that. And that's like when you, Jay, you'll see some of this, you'll see some of this. You know, people will come up there, they haven't mowed their lawn, and they don't have any money, but they'll show up to court, and their lawn won't be mowed, and they got a ticket a month ago, and they're gonna get fined, $320. It's like, why won't you take this offer I'm giving you as a, as a plea agreement to go buy you a lawnmower? They won't do it. It's crazy. I'm preaching, I don't mean to do that, but-
Take the offer, yeah.
You'll take the $320.
I think, you know, you're absolutely right. This is something that I think we all take seriously. I just had a, I had dinner or lunch with a friend who, um, was down here for homecoming, um, and she came back and, for that weekend, and, and she said something that kinda hurt my feelings, and said, "Man, Seminole's really going downhill." And I'm like, "Ah," and so, you know, it's like family, I, I can defend you, I'm, I'm gonna defend you against everybody else, but internally, we're gonna, we're gonna do everything we can. I, I can't tell you how many times I've been to downtown pulling weeds out with my hands and picking up trash. Um, Chase Park, my boys grew up going over there just to pick up trash, more than they would play. So I, I don't, you're absolutely preaching to the choir, it's a tough thing to, to deal with, but I do know that, Steve, I, I get what you're saying at the very end, your last slide, the $365,000. If we go about this plan, that means something else has to go to the wayside. And what is that? And, and, and we have to make that decision, again, so it's, it's even tougher, right, on us. So I just, if anybody's listening on YouTube, or, you know, we talk to our constituents, I just make it very clear, please, I beg you, that this is one of the hardest things for us to deal with, is getting people to take personal responsibility. How do, you can't make another adult do anything, right? Um, they have to wanna do it, it has to instill pride, they have, where's the pride come from, for their town? Um, I mean, they're, but what it's gonna come down to is just $365,000, which we don't have. And so we're gonna have to go and pull it from something else, and, and then that's, you know, that's the hard part. And I don't know if that's the answer right now, if we, like you said, pull out pieces of it. Um, I am a little concerned, Steve, that it moved under the police department and we weren't consulted, 'cause I personally feel like, if I have to look at code enforcement and the juvenile delinquency problem in this town, I'm seeing juvenile, juvenile delinquency. Um, I would like to see law enforcement go more towards that than code enforcement. So we all have different areas that we wanna see this money spent. We already funded, I believe, the code enforcement office, and expenses that go with them, right? So the staff-
It's a personnel decision.
So it's a personnel decision, but I, but we already funded them, and so I'm not real clear on, does that whole office now just go under the police department? Or is, are we just hiring someone else to put them over here, and code enforcement, as we funded it, still stays over here? I'm, I'm confused on that, so if you could clear that up for me. And then on the equipment list, we already have equipment, right? We already have mowers and, and, um-
Yes, but the, those are dedicated for other uses.
They can't share?
Uh, not, not likely.
Okay.
All right? So those mowers for the street park are going. I mean, if it's, if we're able to mow, they're mowing, May till late November, well, probably April, so, yeah, I mean, I, I don't think you're gonna be able to share equipment.
Steve, I, I like the Operation Pride thing, 'cause I, I grew up Operation Pride, you could, you could get a truck, if you had a water bill, you could get a truck for, I think the fee was like 50 bucks or whatever. I tore our whole house down to put it on, and, um, I like that idea, to have the, the ability to go, "Hey, I need a truck here," and whatever. That, that used to be the, the process, I don't know what that would be, what that would look like now. The process, you were, you were in line, and you, you were on the list, and whenever you, they got to you, they parked a truck in front of your house, or whatever, and wherever, tearing something down. Um, though I like that idea, to have some way to get rid of some of the washing machines and some of the couches and some of the stuff. I like that idea, out there on the side of the road, you know, just going home, uh, there's couches and stuff. And I know that we have big pickup day, or whenever that is, but, um, I like the idea, I really do, but I, yeah, 365's a lot of money.
I, I, I agree with you on that. I think, you know, people come to the water office to get a $400 dumpster, and they get it sent to their house, if you can't afford a $400 dumpster. But maybe you have some people who can afford a $50. I wanna come down and get, you know, just like you would rent a dumpster, come down and say, "Hey, I need to be filling the list to pick up my washer, and I pay 50 bucks," and you guys can get it. There's a revenue stream that would follow with that. And maybe if you have too much stuff, it's 100 bucks, I don't know. But I think a lot of that would offset some of that cost, not all of it. But then also, I think if you gain costs like that, maybe you could stick some of that back for a situation where Brad says, "Hey, this family needs a lot of help, they can't afford it. We got, you know, maybe we can give 50 bucks to somebody to come mow that lawn," or something. I don't know. I don't know if you could do something like that, but just help people out. Because there are a lot of people who will tell you, "Hey, I got junk, come pick it up," and they don't wanna pay for it, but they can afford to pay for it. I mean, they can afford 50 bucks. And then there are some people who can't.
And so I think a lot of it comes down to love thy neighborhood and have people come and help you out. And, uh, that's what we do. And I just think that, I mean, they're my neighbor, I'm gonna go mow the grass, and so I've got a push mower, they may not have one, but I got one. And, uh, I mean, that's just, of course, I'm, I'm over there, but I just think that, but I just think that's kinda why we kinda handle some of that, is, you know, you just go do what, you have to do what you have to do in your neighborhood.
I think the hard part is you can't handle all of it.
No, you can't. I'm just saying, but everybody can handle some of it.
Well, I've made some effort to, uh, have a crew go around pick up stuff for people on requests, and, hm, quite frankly, often it seems like no good deed goes unpunished.
That's true.
And, um, you know, when the people stay somewhere 'cause it's cold, wintertime, and I can't get them out, so.
Yeah, I had three hundred houses, I got rid of them as fast as I could.
Yeah. Things, things like that happen, and people do have different lifestyles. And, uh, we can think about reasons why they should do, or should do, or should do, but that's just not how people work. That's not how people function. So find somebody, help them out. And, um, I mean, if you think that someone's going to give you accolades for doing it, well, you probably should go do something else.
That's true.
That's just, that's how it is. But I, when I can afford to do it, that's what I do, when I can't, it don't. And, um, anyway, like I say, you know, it's just like, no good deed goes unpunished.
That's true.
A good part of the time. But $365,000, we don't have 365 to, to spend.
Well, thank you for your time. I, we did not expect a decision tonight. You guys let me know when you want back on the agenda, or specific pieces back on the agenda, we can do it, however you guys want to do it, so.
Like that.
Thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, thanks.
All right.
Moving on, we're gonna move on to comments from board members. Um, we're gonna change stuff, we're gonna go even and odd, so John?
Uh, independent tapes, it looks good. Y'all going by?
Oh, it looks great.
Yes, Strollers and, uh, Born Boulevard.
Need a quick stop there.
Most y'all, Tracy knew about it, grew up with it. Probably Chris, new people, I don't know. But it looks really good, they did a good job. Changed a couple of them.
Really did, looks really good. Now we can build the rest of the house.
Yes.
Ms. Jolene?
Uh, let's, uh, back to my people that helped out, um, in No Good Deed Goes Unpunished. A chainsaw broke Sunday helping somebody. But however, I, I'm a fan of No Good Deed Goes Unpunished. Um, again, I, I wanna thank all those people that did allow me in their yards and invade their space, um, so that I could help them out, and it's, it's hard to accept help sometimes. Um, I wanna say huge congratulations to Stefan Jasna on making lieutenant. Um, I just wish I would've stayed long enough for him to have been the lieutenant. Um, let's see, a big deal for the drainage too, I was so happy to see that stuff on Milk Phillips. Um, now all we need is rain to see if it works. Um, and I'm glad that Steve brought up that, uh, that Seminole Pride, 'cause I had put on here, um, about a community trash pickup, 'cause I believe there were seven mattresses at Stroller and Coolidge. Um, and I had a water leak behind my house, and I thought, well, obviously I would call Baker, um, but then I thought, no, there's an app, let me just try this little thing out. Um, I think I typed on there, maybe at like 7:00 o'clock at night, and at like 6:30 in the morning, I get this weird phone call, and it's one of the city workers telling me, um, that he had saw my, my thing, one of the citizens complained, so fantastic, that thing worked, right, it works right away. I wasn't even sure if anybody even read that thing, but, um-
Interesting.
Yeah, and it did, they, they took care of it, so, um, I got one more weekend left, I think, with my old jalopy mower, I cannot use my chainsaw, but my weed eater and, I think I've got one or two weekends left of my mower working, so, um, if, you know, if anybody needs their yard done, uh, just let me know, and I'll get it tidied up, that's what I'm saying.
By the way, I have a chainsaw, you like to use it?
No.
'Cause I don't even know how to use it.
I can use somebody's.
Oh, no, it's a cheap one, you wouldn't break any chainsaw anyway. Chris? Ward 4, Chris?
Uh, well, I wanna thank you guys for preparing all that stuff for us to look at tonight, it's an uneasy decision. I do have one thing that I, I've noticed of people talking about, and some issues coming up, and it's kind of now that corner there at 9 and 99 is getting a little, getting a little crazy with, uh, you know, Starbucks, the Brahms, and the Bank First going in there. Is there anything we can do or look at? You know, there's, I mean, when Bank First opens, it's even, it's gonna make it even worse. And that's just, I don't know, something, I, I don't know that there is anything we can do, that's a state highway in front of it, it's a state highway to the side, but something we might need to think about, you know? And, uh, like I said, they're pretty much stacked on top of each other, and it's kind of a crazy area there with the stoplight, and, uh, people coming in and out of there all the time, you know? Or a lot more than there was when it was just Brahms, anyway. Just something for this, you know, minds who think through stuff like that, traffic, you know, to maybe take a look at. That's all I got. Thank you.
Chris?
Uh, just can't say enough about the new management out there at the Jag. We've had over 150 participants in our Thursday night scrambles this year, uh, and we're gonna finish it off with a tournament of champions, $7,200 prize money, so it's a pretty, pretty big deal. Uh, they also instituted a couples' night, uh, for any women that are interested in playing with their husband, I don't know. Uh, but it was like every other Friday night, I'm not sure how often they were planning on doing that, that was a new addition. Then they got new carpet in the clubhouse, new counters, new merch, I mean, it really looks good in there. Uh, just wanted to tell everybody, watch out for trick-or-treaters coming up, and, uh, big kudos to city workers on that drainage ditch and, and all the city park right there. That looks fantastic. That's all I got.
All right, Steve, Ward 3. Scott?
I got very much to say. Uh, I lost one of my dogs.
Uh, I lost one of my dogs two weeks ago that I've had for twelve years that I got from the man's society. She had a blood infection. I was at work, my wife called me, said I think we gotta put her down. And I was getting off work at ten o'clock and halfway home, my son called me, said, Dad, she couldn't wait on you. It was my dog. He was my girl.
I'm sorry.
She was a whiner runner. She can bark and hear that millman three blocks down the road. Never understood it. She'd be barking and barking, never see nobody, hear come the millman. It's like, oh yeah, the millman's here. Thanks. Good dog gets hurt. Um, I gotta say, Baker, you guys did awesome, man. That park is beautiful. I, I, I see Stretch and he's like, man, have you seen our park? So I was seeing some burning over here. He goes, dude, we cut, what was it, seventy something trees?
Hundred and twelve.
Hundred and twelve, yeah.
Hundred and twelve trees.
Yeah. Yeah. And how many loads of mud did they haul out of there?
Uh, we're still calculating there.
I don't know if y'all ever went down and seen that, but when they're in the middle of it, you can see how deep it was. When I was down there, it was probably three feet already taken out.
That's good.
Yeah. Again, good job. Um, I don't know, I'm gonna brag on the city workers. That's all I'm gonna do. Water department had a main break around the corner from the house by Cory's house. I went out there, bought them some water one day. When I got off of work, it was hot. Got it knocked out. They had another main break they had to go knock out. Later on the day, they had another one. Hey, I used to do that. Trust me. I think most we had in one day was six and it was minus seventeen degrees. But, hey, it was just a weird day, but that's all. Thank you.
All right. And, uh, thank you for being one of the few that will adopt those dogs and take them home because not very many people will do that. So appreciate it. Jeff?
Uh, just grateful like always to be here. I appreciate it. Appreciate the opportunity to serve my community. Um, would like to shout out to Baker, uh, man, I just call him and every time I call him, he's just like, okay, we'll do it. And Dean, I appreciate you with the help of Dean. Um, you know, I, I think that we're doing some good stuff, man. Uh, I know everybody doesn't like everything we do, but, you know, I've been a pastor a long time, it's par for the course. And, uh, you know, you always scramble the wrong egg. Uh, but it's an honor to get to sit here and, and see that. You know, when you're, when you're just in the city, you don't, you think everybody's like, oh, they just did that for this and that reason. You don't see the, how the sausage is made and all the decisions you have to make and all the things you have to make and you have to decide, okay, do I feed these people or do I feed these people? And, uh, so it's, it's pretty tough. But I appreciate, appreciate the opportunity. Whoever gave me this, this is awesome. Thank you. I don't know who they're with. I appreciate that. Yeah, appreciate it. And I just, I showed up and I had a picture. This was awesome. Um, always an honor to be here. Never take it for granted. I appreciate you guys. Appreciate all the city workers and all the guys that work. Matt, we even appreciate you out there. Even you. Appreciate you guys. I think I have a great town. I love it. And, uh, you know, I've been here since nineteen sixty-nine and I'm planning to leave it. So I appreciate you guys.
Larry Church?
Well, there's not much to add. We do have the best city management that I know of. And I'd challenge anyone to find a city that does, of our size, that does as much as we do and does it as well as we do. And anything that I can do to help the city workers. I mean, make no bones about it, I'm pro labor. And I want our city employees to have bragging rights. That'll only help us if we keep giving them what they need to do the job. We know they're willing and capable of doing it, so. Thank you.
Dana? You should go first. I'm throwing you a loop here.
I know. So I just wanted, um, welcome to Ward one, everyone. Um, I just wanted to say, uh, Medo, to Mayor Crabtree for coming out to Seminole Nation Days last month and participating in the activities there and going in the, into the parade with me. Um, there was, it says a lot for fostering relationships with the tribal community and the new administration, which we all have to work together. And I think, um, just, if you could have just heard when we were going by, people were like, what? City of, you know, the city of Seminole is here? Like, what? And they were like, hi Cory, like, and, and I want that confusion to end and that surprise because it should be normalized. And I want to just say thank you for, for doing that and, and keeping that, that up. That, that took a lot out of your, your day and I appreciate that. Um, you know, I just wanted to just mention that, you know, we're, we're hearing everything about, you know, I think Jolene had mentioned earlier too, like the federal government shutdown. And I was at a meeting the other day and, um, it was, it was a tribal meeting and, and there were some people from OML, Oklahoma Municipal League there, and they were working together on some things. And I was like, this is where it's all at, right here, right now, is at the local level. And it was, it was really neat to see them and, you know, they were working together. They're not shutting down. We don't have the luxury of shutting down. Your water still has to run, your toilets still have to flush. Police officers still have to issue citations and get people to obey the law. We don't have the, the flexibility or, you know, I think the, the luxury of just politicizing every little thing and stopping what we're doing by serving our, our constituents. And we, you know, I, I thought about that a little bit and it just made me proud, not only of the work that we all do as a group because honestly, out in the, in the regular, you know, world outside of here, we probably don't, we're all not in the same friend group or, you know, we don't, we're out related or whatever. But man, we have something in common, you know, a brotherhood, a sisterhood where we don't stop looking out for our constituents. And I just want to say thank you, Medo, to all of you for that. Um, Steve, you're, you're amazing in that you just, you don't stop. I don't know when you ever take a break and I don't really want you to, but I just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you.
And one of the reasons why I was thinking about that as well was, and I mentioned this earlier, was I really do feel like there is an issue, maybe it's just, you know, in Ward one, but I think it's happening everywhere, is juvenile delinquency in our town. I would like to see the curfew being enforced more. Um, I had some, four juveniles walking down the street and just throw a rock at my house, just for the hell of it. Um, destroying property just because they can, because no one's watching them. There's no adults around to keep them in check. Um, that's not right. So I would like to see some more efforts and I have seen more efforts, I want to say that. I have seen more efforts from the police department. I've seen more patrolling. Um, I think that's great. I would, I was thinking on the budget, I would love to see some more go towards our, our law enforcement to be able to make sure that, you know, people in our, our town live safely. I hear gunshots all the time in my area. You can hear, you know, in the middle of the night, just, you know, just why, what's going on? So I know that they're doing a dangerous job and I know they need more resources. And I would like to do what I can to help them and I'd like to ask you all to join me in that when we start talking about looking at resources and where they need to go. And then finally, Chase Park. I got to take my great nieces to Chase Park the other day and play on the, it's been there a while, but the, the new equipment and it was just great to see. I think you said, you know, you had seen kids out there playing at the, the other park and there, there are kids running around happy and I'm like, okay, this is, this is great. This is the future of our city and I, I think we have to start somewhere. And it was, it was really positive to see that, so. Thank you all. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Um, I had a little incident where the police department had to help me out and I will give kudos to Jordan from Garner. Jordan and I unfortunately go a long ways back with a call that was at my house, but he didn't help me the other night. So I appreciate it. He was on, Johnny on the spot. He was right there, so. Um, Seminole Nation Days was fun and I, she made me a nice shirt to wear. I believe this was your aunt?
My aunt made that.
Yeah. And so that was really cool that I actually had something to wear and I believe the correct word is regalia.
Regalia, not costume. Very good.
She taught me that, by the way.
You didn't know that?
Well, I called it something else unintentionally last week and she's like, Cory, and I corrected it. I'm sorry. All right. Um, but I do, Baker, love the park. Looks great. I mean, it's amazing you can see right through there with all those trees going and it just looks, I can't imagine what that's gonna look like next summer when the grass is green and no trees and it's gonna look really good. So, um, but the, uh, what was my next one? The monkey's back on the train? That's, yeah. Yeah. But also, um, the Christmas lights, thank you guys. Um, I hope that they do shine bright. I hope they do. If they do not, like I said, downtown will definitely enjoy them because downtown can use them too. So I think that's great. Um, I did have a constituent call me today and although we can't do anything about it, it is the intersection at Highway nine and three. So this is gonna be at the college. It's becoming extremely congested apparently during school and just those times of the day. I know that we can't really do anything. That's ODOT. So if we could revisit that situation and resend another request to them to have them relook at that, I don't know what that process is. But I can only imagine if you're a teenager driver going through there, it's, it's pretty frustrating. And this person almost got hit by a semi. And so she was like, it's just dangerous to me. And I said, well, I agree. It's two main highways intersecting and we have a whole entertainment center going out there. We have a football facility, a baseball facility. We had everything out there. So I don't know whose job it is to report those, if it's Baker's or yours to come in contact with them and say, hey, come re, relook at this. We need to do that. I would rather have those lights in place before the entertainment center and you've got two, two hundred people extra out there just, and then they're all gonna go home and have to travel that way, so. Um, but I thought that was a really, that was a pretty legit request because it is becoming more congested, so. And that's really all that I have, so. Um, Seminole Nation Days, by the way, was great. I had a lot of people that caught me in town. They're like, hey, I saw you there. And I'm like, well, yeah, I would go. But it really baffled me at how many people actually attend. I did not know that was such a big event.
Big deal.
There was a ton of people out there. And they told us that there was probably a, probably twenty-five percent down from what it has been in the past. And so that's pretty crazy. And so it was, it was great to be out there. I enjoyed it myself, so. Anyway, moving on. Steve?
Yeah. Uh, just enjoyed meeting our new chief and assistant chief. I've had a couple of meetings with them and, uh, sharp. I, I feel like their, our Seminole Nation is in good hands moving forward. Uh, regardless of, of some of the negative discussion regarding code enforcement, I can tell you that we've got new housing everywhere. Uh, Seminole is in the middle of a boom and it's, it's, it's incredible what we're seeing in terms of building permits and activity and construction. It's just, it's, it's amazing. Um, I agree with John, the independent tank site looks fantastic. It changed the whole vibe of that side of the town. Uh, I'm excited to see what happens when we get some commercial activity on the, on the north side of where Independent Tank was, so. Um, John, did I hear this right? The, the adoption thing they had this week, how many dogs do we had, did we have left?
You have some of your mother had before. You had four left.
Four dogs left in this shelter.
That's awesome.
Wow. You know, yay, right? So that's good stuff.
Huh? It's usually four. Yeah, it's usually like sixty, seventy.
Four, yeah. So, yeah, big deal. So, uh, yeah, the Baker and, and his crew and what they've done with the drainage down by the snow cone stand in the, in the park, just, I don't know how you can say anything, but just impressive. Um, I, I always said we've got the best in Oklahoma and I stick by that every, every time something like that happens. Um, Sunset Market, your last time to be able to visit Sunset Market will be this Friday, so make an effort to get down to the wellness center and it starts at six o'clock. Um, you know, we, we changed up the parking situation by the Seminole Football Stadium. Um, if you weren't aware, we made the north side of, of Mike Snyder. As you leave the practice field and go toward Bourne Boulevard, we made that no parking on the north side so that our, our emergency vehicles could get back and forth. We were, there were, it was getting a little bit hairy and, uh, people were parking in the intersections, et cetera. And I think we've got it nipped in the bud and surprisingly, uh, I didn't get what I expected, which was a lot of blowback. It, it seems like everybody kind of understands and so we're not seeing a lot of negativity on that. Um, we did have a meeting for the new airport terminal and, uh, man, you talk about excitement. It's, it's gonna be a big deal. That, as I've always said, that's our front door for industry. Um, I'll get into the budget and CIP and why we call those things CIP on another meeting. I'm not gonna do it right now. Uh, Jay brought up some points that I think need to be hammered on a little bit and so that the public understands some of the terminology that we're using. And we'll do that in another meeting. Um, the ODOT and three situation, uh, I know we've been moved back, but they have had plans for several, like five years to do a roundabout, a huge roundabout, not like we've got at Struthers, okay? Uh, a big, big Texas slash Arkansas type roundabout. And that is their decision. We had nothing to do with that. Uh, so it will be, it will be a big improvement. And it, it's, it's going to be, my understanding, and Baker, you can correct me, I, I think last time we met with, uh, T W Shannon, who is the director of ODOT, Lana had the concern. We met with him, it's probably been about a year ago. And I think we had it on the board for twenty twenty-eight or twenty twenty-nine to do the roundabout. Now, with that being said, I think everything, they just announced last week that everything had been pushed back maybe two more years. So, uh, that roundabout and solving the Highway three and nine issue may be twenty thirty. Okay, so, um, that's just a wild guess. I'm, I'm certain, knowing what I know about ODOT, they're very aware of fatalities. And, uh, the only way you get moved up the list is by unfortunate accidents, okay? So, um, we'll, we'll just be patient and let it go. Uh, we'll, we'll eventually get there and we'll have a solution. Lastly, uh, there's a substantial reward being offered for anyone that can produce a verified photograph of Trace Connor at the OSU game slinging his shirt bare chested. Uh, that, it, it is, if you saw the, the clip of these guys at the OSU game slinging their shirts bare chested, it was, it was quite a scene. You were there though, right?
Were you standing next to him?
No comment. All right. Uh, and Jolene, I'd be glad to give you my home address if you're doing yard work for free. Uh, I'll get with you offsite and, uh, we'll get that set up. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right. Brad Carter?
Just one comment on the, on the court docket. Uh, I was informed by Susie, our municipal court clerk, that, uh, there, this docket, which is next Wednesday, was one of the largest dockets we've had in quite some time just due to the code enforcement citations that were issued back in September. Um, from what I understand, uh, many people that have been cited have appeared already with photographs in front of the judge of their, of their premises, showing that it had been cleaned up. And he's fined a lot of them and, and taking care of those. So we'll see how many show up next Wednesday. But anyway, for whatever, for whatever that's worth, I know something, something positive's come out of that, so. It's passing it along.
All right. One thing I was gonna add to our meeting with, uh, Seminole Nation, the chiefs that came by. Um, it was very interesting that really about all they wanted to talk about was what was going on in Seminole and what was going on with them. It was very interesting conversation. They wanted to know how we could help each other. So when you had, you had me put that on the banner on the trucks, it was collaboration. That was really what that was. That was very interesting. They're like, well, where can we help or can you help us with this? So it was really interesting. I, that was the first time I've ever been to a meeting like that, but it was really interesting. They were so interested in how each other could help the other one, so. They were so interested in how each other could help the other one, so, but that was really great. And thank you for the parking signs, by the way. Not that people in Seminole I'm that concerned about, I'm more concerned about people who visit the field and don't know the difference. Follow the leader means park behind the next person. So the signs, I think, are the best, best option for that, so whoever did that, I appreciate it. So that's all we have. I'm gonna go ahead and read this executive session off and then we'll need a vote to go into executive session. Considerations, discussion and possible action to enter into executive session under Oklahoma statute twenty-five OS subsection three oh seven D for confidential communications between a public body and its attorney concerning pending investigation, claim or action. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any pose, last time.